Good evening. We will now call to order the May 12, 2022, meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Brodsky, Rothman.
Here.
De Placido, Vaughn. Thompson.
Here.
Weingrad.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Zepone.
Here.
Carswell.
Here.
Spiegelman. Bowe.
Here.
Schreiber.
Here.
Goman.
Here.
Vice President Veighi.
Here.
President Hecker.
Here, thank you. Please note that Commissioners De Placido, Spiegelman, and Brodsky are excused from tonight's meeting, and Commissioner Vaughn is in attendance via Zoom. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before moving on to our agenda, I'm going to ask that we take a moment of silence this evening. As we prepare in this country for the one millionth recorded death from the COVID-19 virus, I ask that we reflect for a moment on the lives lost and the impact on their Thank you. I have a few announcements this evening. The first is that the agenda item for 365 Cedar Road, Commissioner De Placido had requested last week that this agenda item not be considered on this evening's agenda and has requested a motion at the appropriate place on the agenda to move this matter to a future meeting, no sooner than the June 9, 2022, board meeting. And so we will be addressing that when we get to that on the agenda. My second announcement is that after discussions with individual board members, the township will not be scheduling a hearing on the proposal received from Preet to construct a residential apartment building at the Willow Grove Mall. And my third announcement is our Stay Connected videos. We will begin running a Stay Connected video that introduces residents and anyone interested in receiving information on what is happening in the township. This video will be running at the conclusion of this meeting for the next several months. We also invite you to visit our website and learn more about the numerous methods for communicating what is happening in the township. And with that, we will now entertain public comment on agenda items this evening. Start with those in the room. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay. I'm here to comment on the condemning of the practice of conversion therapy. I see this as just a political act to improve the resumes of those who pass it. This document is a poor cut-and-paste sample that's been pushed nationwide, and the online samples do not define the terms used. There's no definition for conversion therapy in there. There's no definition for mental health professionals. There's no mention of parents' rights or patients' HIPAA rights. Many diversions floating out there give exemptions for religious counseling. This doesn't. Though this may be well-meaning, it may hinder treatment for minors. Unfortunately, in this world, many children have their first sexual relationship forced on them. This breaks their lives, their evolution of their sexual development, and this leaves many confused, untrusting, suicidal, and broken. There are loving folks that, big hearts, that are willing to help these kids in their shattered lives and help them move forward. We have seen many hurt by the scandals at Penn State, schools, churches. They have had their sexual and relational developments altered. For this one, I want to see treatment of these minors not be regulated by politicians with an agenda, which this bill stands for. I don't think that the Abington Board of Commissioners should be passing political documents that have no means to enforce. Where will this end? Every group will want a resolution passed and will flood you with requests. And how will you choose what to go and pass and what not to pass? Will you only pass the ones that interest you and your parties that you agree with? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other residents who wish to address the agenda?
Good evening. My name's Joe Applegate. I live at One Elma Avenue in Glen Side.
Yes.
These are some excerpts from an article titled "Benefits of Conversion Therapy." This is by a guy named George Corniel, and they mirror my concerns. Many have heard news regarding banning conversion therapy. I'm against any form of counseling that would harm any individual. There are instances where some individuals were traumatized by conversion therapy, but this is not all cases. Medical professionals are supposed to care about their patients. Unfortunately, some medical professionals have harmed their patients either intentionally or unintentionally. Why don't we outlaw all forms of medical procedures? The fear mongering by the LGBT activists suggests that every counselor is out to hurt the LGBT community. This is not true. George is the son of a Baptist minister, and in his words, he spent 25 years in a homosexual lifestyle. George believed because of counseling and the work of the Holy Spirit, he was able to work through his numerous issues and change his life. George had decades of counseling by several therapists ranging from Christian to non-Christian, heterosexual, homosexual. He stated that he's never ridiculed, belittled, disrespected because of his faith and/or his struggles. His counselors were nothing but kind, considerate, and compassionate. Government officials and LGBT activists need to understand that regardless of parent's stance on an issue of homosexuality, that being a teenager is hard enough without additional pressure of struggling with same-sex attraction or gender dysphoria. Laws have been implemented around the world in which parents are threatened with jail time and are having their child removed from their home if they object to their son's desire to have his penis removed because he thinks he's a girl. The same laws threaten counselors, even medical professionals, with jail time should they not affirm a child's desire to change his or her gender. This is already starting to take place in the United States. You have to be 16 to drive, 18 to vote, 21 to buy alcohol. A minor can't even sign a binding contract, but a pre-teen child is allowed to make life-altering decisions to change their gender. This is infuriating, and I'm here tonight to stand up against the state's control of our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room that wishes to make comments about this evening's agenda?
The masks don't do anything. Joe Rooney.
That's not on the agenda, Mr. Rooney. So let's get to your comments.
I reclaim my time for your interruption. So on this evening, if I look through the agenda, it says sale of property, traffic safety, landscaping contract, major subdivision on Cedar Road with 180 pages of detailed work. Then there's two meaningless resolutions submitted by Commissioner Schreiber, responsible contractor and condemning conversion therapy. Then there's a financial report. Where did these two resolutions come from? Who wrote them? I challenge that Commissioner Schreiber wrote them. I doubt if she did. There's some underlying political motive behind it, and I don't know what it is, and it should be explained before they come in. What are you going to do next? Condemn the 12-step program if you want to? Challenge treatments on depression? How about, I think this is schizophrenic. One moment, we're on Cedar Road at a construction site. The next time, we're talking about some specific medical treatment that none of you have any expertise in, nor do I, nor does Mr. Manfredi or anybody in this room. If you have time in this busy agenda to waste on issues that you can affect, how about talking about $5 a gallon gas in Roslyn? $5 a gallon milk? $4 for a dozen eggs? 8% inflation or rising interest rates? At least all of these things actually affect people in Abington Township, and they worry about them every single day. Not one of you people has been on the campaign walk and had anybody talking about any of these issues, whether it's responsible contracting or conversion therapy. Again, this is politics. These other gentlemen said it very well. These resolutions are nothing more than left-wing political statements that have nothing to do with our township. You are wasting township time and resources. Shame on you for that. There must be some adult in the room, township manager or the president, okay, who stands up and says, "No, we're dealing with township business. Leave your partisan political issues to your campaign rallies." Oh, and there'll be more on illegal campaign rallies in my next comment section. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah. Good evening. My name's Dave Rondinelli, Jr. I'm 1848 Horace Avenue in Abington. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to briefly speak with you about a pre-COVID pandemic property issue, which began over six years ago in 2016. The house at 1855 Horace Avenue is located a few hundred yards away from the township building and has been abandoned and in deplorable condition.
Mr. Rondinelli, I'm just going to stop. This is not on the agenda this evening, correct?
No.
Okay. So we reserve comments, general comments, to the end of the meeting.
Okay, no problem.
This is a comment period for matters that are before the board this evening.
Okay, I'll wait.
Thank you. Any further comments from those attending in person? And if not, we will turn to Zoom.
Ms. Lehman, you're unmuted.
This is Laura Lehman in Meadowbrook, and I actually am stunned at the fact that you are just moving this item with the Cedar Road, 365 Cedar Road, after my email to you outlining the illegal presentation of that ordinance, of that application, on this agenda. Literally, there were nine waivers and not a single hardship. The one that was listed as though it might be a hardship was that they wanted to provide more green space, which of course only needed to be provided because they were putting on too many properties and taking green space away. Literally, every single agency and reviewer who looked at that application ignored Pennsylvania law and ignored the fact that it certainly could not be approved with nine waivers, none of which had any validity since they were of the applicant's maker, nearly all of them. I'm not sure if all of them were. I'd have to go down them one by one. So, you know, to Mr. Rondinelli's point, we have people in our zoning office that are overseeing this project at 365 Cedar and overseeing what he just brought up that have zero experience or have a history of not being able to manage those code and zoning issues. So where was the oversight from the zoning officer and the zoning director, who, if you recall, when you appointed her, we pointed out that she had zero experience and is coming up against very powerful people with very strong desires to make a lot of money doing things they shouldn't be doing? And I believe at 365 Cedar, you can see this in spades. And there are other places in the township where too many units have been put in and residents have been affected and others where they're about to be put in and residents likely will be affected. And that kind of operation in this township shouldn't be allowed. I also want to speak to the Responsible Contractor Ordinance, where it doesn't look like you took out the clause that had to do with the apprenticeships. And that would eliminate such a large number of the bidders on our projects that it would drive the price up. It would leave only the largest agencies, and they'd know that there were only a few of them. They might even take turns putting in huge bids. And that has happened in other townships. And there are other problems that have.
Ms. Lehman, I'm going to ask you to wrap up your comments. You're beyond three minutes.
Yes, so I definitely, and I would like to say that the finances should be put in an interactive chart for us, and we've asked for that and received any help with that. Okay, so.
All right. Thank you for your comments. We will now move on to the consent agenda, and for that, is there one more? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Mr. Tovin, you're unmuted. You're unmuted, Mr. Tovin.
Yeah, Mike Tovin, Kirkwood. Just a quick question regarding the responsible contractor requirements. The last time this came up, in Section 3C10, it said 70% of the workforce would have had to have completed an apprenticeship. Is that still written in the, is that still the language that's being used in this, in the requirements? Because that means the majority of the, the majority of the workers would have to be journeymen, which is going to drive up the cost. Normally, like normally on a union job, there might be, you know, two journeymen, three or four apprentices, or there's some ratio that's used. In this case, the ratio would be, would be like seven to one journeyman to apprentice, and that would drive the cost up for the township. So is that still, is that still the language that you use in the 70% of the workforce? If you could just let me know about that, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Assistant Gallagher, yeah.
Mr. Hecker, yes, that is the language that is in the ordinance.
Thank you. No further comments on Zoom? We will now move to the consent agenda, and for that, I turn to Board Vice President, Commissioner Matt Veighi.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item is the consent agenda, which is a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is listed on the agenda as Items A through D, and I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. We do not have any items of unfinished business this evening, so we will move to new business. And again, I will turn to Board Vice President Matt Veighi.
The first item is BOC-04-051222, motion to appoint Kyle Hanlon from the civil service eligibility list to the position of police officer effective May 16, 2022. An ISO move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions from members of the board present here? Any comments from members on Zoom? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. For Item 2, I am going to call for a motion to consider, to defer consideration of the major subdivision and land development plan for 365 Cedar Road to a future Board of Commissioners meeting no sooner than June 9. So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from members of the board? Anyone on Zoom? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next item on our agenda is BOC-06-051222, is a motion to authorize advertisement of ordinance number 2193, establishing procedures for certification of responsible contractor requirements. An ISO move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions from members present in the room? Commissioner Weingrad.
Thank you. I think I asked this question last month, and I'm not against this, but I think we should just all know whether or not we anticipate higher costs as a result of this ordinance. And I don't know, you know, who can answer that, but I think, at least from a taxpayer's standpoint, it may be the right thing to do. We just have to know if we're going to spend more for services.
Fair enough. Commissioner Schreiber.
I believe that was addressed in the last, by our solicitor, that there hadn't been any concrete proof, but maybe, I don't know, if Lauren wants to address that.
Certainly, and we're certainly happy to discuss this further at the meeting where this is considered, but there has been no objective data that it does increase any costs. There are no, material costs are obviously material costs, and the threshold for the implementation of the, am I not close enough? The threshold in the ordinance is $250,000. It does only apply to public works contracts.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions for members present here? Members on Zoom? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
No. I believe that's one opposed.
I'm sorry. Say that again?
One opposed.
One opposed.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is BOC-07-051222, motion to adopt resolution number 22-014, condemning the practice of conversion therapy and urging state lawmakers to enact the Protection of Minors from Conversion Therapy Act. An ISO move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there comments or questions from members present here? I'll start with Commissioner Schreiber and then Commissioner Zepone.
Thank you very much. So first of all, I wanted to thank our Human Relations Commission for another excellent program on Tuesday night. I know that everybody went to it, really were well-educated on the subject matter. And I just also want to point out that they have had a, well, we have had as a township, a 10-year anniversary of our Anti-Discrimination Act, and our HRC has become a model for other communities. So other HRCs call on them, ask them, you know, their advice on things, so kudos to them. So we really should be very proud of them. They've had several really wonderful programs. They have another one coming up in June. I think it's June 23rd. I'm not sure. But the one on Tuesday in particular pertained directly to this resolution, which is why I was bringing up their program from Tuesday. So again, I want to thank them. I also want to thank the panel members, including people from the Trevor Project and the producer of the documentary Cured, which was shown during the program. Again, the people who did attend were well-educated. So we chose to have this HRC program followed by tonight's resolution, in part as an acknowledgement that this is Mental Health Awareness Month. The resolution that we are voting on tonight is to urge the Pennsylvania General Assembly to pass a bill condemning the practice of conversion therapy. This is House Bill 729. We have, over the years, since I've been Commissioner, sent several resolutions to the state, so this is not out of keeping, this is something that we normally do. This act prohibits mental health professionals from engaging in conversion therapy with an individual under the age of 18 years of age. Conversion therapy is a discredited practice. The American Psychiatric Association and the American Academy of Pediatrics have both come out against this practice. No one should be subject to practices that can cause or worsen mental health symptoms. LGBTQ youth are not inherently higher risk for suicide attempts. However, they can be placed in a higher-risk category if they are, according to how they are treated or stigmatized. The potential risks of these so-called reparative therapies are great, including depression, anxiety, and self-destructive behavior. It was shared during Tuesday's program that the Trevor Project has been collecting data, so far interviewing 30,000 young people in an ongoing mental health survey. Approximately eight to 10 of that number revealed that they have received conversion therapy, and there are statistics indicating that these young people were twice as likely to have suicide attempts. In addition, the project has documented actual practitioners in this county who have engaged in the practice. So I ask each of you to support this important resolution. And one final note that I want to mention is that both of our local state reps, both State Rep Ben Sanchez and Nancy Guns have already signed on as sponsors to this current legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Commissioner Zepone.
Just a couple of comments. First of all, I don't know what this has to do with the township. I want to see resolutions on this agenda that are going to help the senior citizens and plans to help lower taxes. Putting plans together that's going to lower taxes, okay? This affects all the taxpayers in this township, okay? So if this is a state thing, let the state lawmakers put it on the floor up in Harrisburg. That's my, excuse me.
Thank you, Commissioner Zepone. Any further comments for members in the room? Any of our colleagues on Zoom wish to comment?
Yes, I do. As a mental health professional, this is something that does affect us as a township because we don't know who in our township are dealing with issues that may arise from conversion therapy. So this is absolutely a township issue that we should be discussing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vaughn. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
No. One opposed.
Motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is BOC-08-051222, is a motion to ratify the Conference of Stormwater Management Plan change order request. An ISO move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members present here in the boardroom? Are there any questions from Commissioners on Zoom? Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, President Hecker. Management Manfredi, this, the contract that this is being applied to, was there an end date or a duration or a schedule attached to that initial contract?
There was, and the, yes, sir. We amended, we amended it one time because we slowed the project because of COVID. So the contract was awarded. We got into COVID. When COVID hit, we suspended moving forward with it. There was a change to that contract schedule where we had to address costs, cost overruns and rising costs with respect to their costs, and that was amended. And now we are trying to redo the scope and finalize the timeline. In fact, the, this action item is really about the escalation fee that, and I'm sure you read this in the summary, 1,23906, but it's specific to the 2.3 evaluating existing ordinances, future services, stakeholder input, public outreach, and the Conference of Stormwater Management Plan. The representative for Wood is on this evening so she can talk to this timeline so that we can have a final timeline to get the Stormwater Management Ordinance completed, public engagement done, and move forward with it. And ideally, we're pushing this to tie in with our budget.
I guess my question is, a lot of the scope has been in the contract for a while, so why isn't it? It's what's held it back. Other than, you know, I understand COVID, but we've learned how to meet online and do, you know, online engagement. This seems like it's been dragging out, and this, you know, this $1,200, while it's kind of a small amount, it's a little bit of a slap in the face to the township on this.
We are very aware. Mr. Hassan and I, especially through Mr. Hassan, has been working with Wood to stay on top of the scope, to make sure things are moving forward. That's why they're representatives here this evening. Cal, if you would not mind, addressing specifically some of the things that we have talked about with Wood as it relates to Commissioner Thompson's points.
Thank you, Management Manfredi. Good evening, Commissioners. As Management Manfredi had mentioned, for the past several months, we have been working closely with Ms. Mufflock of Wood and also some of her team members. The main reason, the main cause for this is really COVID, as it affected a lot of projects and a lot of deadlines. Once we had a very good handle on what's going on, we did have several meetings and conversations with Wood. We brought them back to the table, and then we reestablished the timelines again. As part of that, it resulted in a couple of months of delays. As Commissioner Thompson, you have mentioned, it's only $1,200. I am, obviously, I'm in no position to say, it's not, it's not money coming out of my pocket, so it's easy for me to say, oh, it's only $1,200. But it truly is an insignificant amount or minute amount as compared to the product that the township is going to be getting. So we are very confident we're going to achieve the final result very soon, and Ms. Mufflock is on. to achieve the final result very soon. And Ms. Mufflock is on the call right here. They did provide as of yesterday, a final outline for the deadlines and as of yesterday, and put a paperwork that we have in front of us and the motion that Commissioners may be looking at taking action on. The project should be completed and handed over to the township by the third week or so, say the end of July of this year. So we're going to make sure we see it through to make sure it does take place. Ms. Mufflock, if you could please confirm that the project will be handed over to the township by, by July of this year?
Good evening. Thank you. So on the resolution that we've provided with an updated schedule, we hold the last forum, which is for public engagement, in the week of July 25th. So in order to incorporate the results from that forum into the comprehensive stormwater management plan, I anticipate that would be like mid-August. But you're on track. It was just a little bit off. So I think that the intent is correct. We're trying to wrap it up as soon as we can to get you guys the public engagement, to get you the stakeholder feedback, and to incorporate that into that comprehensive plan and, and close it out. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the, the schedule itself, as well as the approach to accomplish those tasks.
And if I could ask you, moving forward, Ms. Mufflock, after tonight's meeting and depending on the direction that we're all going to be getting from the Commissioners, the dates that you had specified now plus or minus a couple of weeks you mentioned, and just say it is mid-August, then it is the date, that's it. And knowing that the township has offered and responded and given you the information that you need, mid-August is the deadline, that's it.
Right. That was one of the reasons that we wanted to get this stipulated in the scope when making the request for any fee. The intent was more to capture the schedule and how we want to execute it and make sure that we're all on the same page so that we can get it done as quick as possible and to give you the product that you need. Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson, I hope this provided you with some, the information that you're looking for.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions for members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
One opposed.
Motion carries.
Mr. President, that concludes the new business of the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Vice President Vehe. We will now move to the Finance Committee. And for that, I will turn to the Chair of the Committee, Commissioner Stuart Weingrad.
Thank you, President Hecker. First up, we're going to receive a Treasury report. Treasurer Blumenthal, are you on the line?
I am.
Go ahead. The floor is yours.
Good to see everybody. Thank you so much, Commissioner. I'm going to start out again with the monies received from various departments that were deposited in Republic Bank in the month of April. We had a total deposited of $24,947,573, year-to-date $44,042,303. If you take the month of April and you compare it to last year, it's an increase of $793,152 and a year-to-date increase of $6,408,451. Getting on to the amounts of real estate collected, real estate taxes transferred to the Finance Department for the month of April, we collected $21,051,619 as compared to April of 2021, of $20,156,371. As you can see, there's an increase of $895,248. Year-to-date, we're at 89% with $3,758,596 to be collected by the end of 2022. As a side note, and I always bring this up, the final payment at face for real estate taxes, and you might want to tell your constituents if they're needing to rise, is June 6, and after June 6, it will be in the penalty period. Those are my reports. I'd be happy to entertain any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Blumenthal. Do we have any questions or comments from Commissioners in the room? Any on Zoom at home? No? Thank you, Treasurer Blumenthal. Good to see you.
You're welcome.
Next up is agenda item FC zero one, one five, excuse me, zero one zero five one two two two. Motion to approve a change order for Harzley Community Center chairlift project, and I so move.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members here in the boardroom? Any questions from members on Zoom? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you. And last agenda item for the Finance Committee, motion to approve the March 2022 expenditures in the amount of $1,435,264.74 and salaries and wages in the amount of $2,52,213.95 and authorizing the proper officials to sign vouchers and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of June 2022, and I so move.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments or questions for members of the board here in the room? Anyone on Zoom? Hearing none. I'll call for the roll call vote.
Commissioners Brodsky, Rothman?
Yes.
Implesito, Vaughn?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weingrad?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Appone?
Yes.
Carswell?
Yes.
Stiggleman? Bo?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Vice President Vehe?
Yes.
President Hecker?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
And that would conclude the Finance Committee agenda items for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Weingrad. That concludes our formal agenda. We will now entertain a public comment on general matters of township business. Mr. Rondelli, please come forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Hecker. I'll be real brief here. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Hecker. I'll be real brief.
Sure thing.
My name is Dave Rondelli, Jr., 1848 Harris Avenue in Abington, a few blocks down the street here. Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to briefly speak with you about a pre-COVID pandemic property issue which began over six years ago in 2016. The house at 1855 Harris is located a few hundred yards away from the Township Building and is abandoned and in deplorable condition. The house is currently collapsing and the backyard is terribly overgrown. I've witnessed children playing on the unsafe property, neighbors walking their dogs along with raccoons, cats, mice. I've even witnessed the second alarmers ambulance squad frantically trying to enter the property. It was the wrong address. I had to run across the street and tell them, no, just stop wasting any more time. Code enforcement is very familiar with the property and our concerns over the year, years. Commissioner Carswell has been working hard trying to keep us up to date with the plans. Just wanted to get it on record that I was told that this month finally they're going to demolish it, but this has been going on for years now. And it's just an embarrassment. And I don't understand why it's taken so long. I don't know if it's some special kind of property, FBI safe house. Like, it's just strange. It's been going on for years. And it's, I just wanted to come to a conclusion. It just doesn't look good for Abington Township. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Manager Man Freddie?
Thank you, President Hecker. I think that there's a couple of things. Number one, he is correct that Commissioner Carswell has been working with us to get this problem fixed. One of the things you'll hear in the presentations from Ms. Hamm later is some of the plans that we're trying to make to get funding for these kinds of situations. So that's being addressed in the future. And a lot of it has to do with property rights, cost, and our ability to go onto private property. But it, but it is well taken. We understand, and we are trying to take steps going forward to, to address this.
Thank you, Manager Man Freddie. Other, other residents who present who wish to speak? Please come forward.
Hi, Joe Rooney. I live in Harzley. First, for Mr. Rondelli, after six years, whatever's going on is working. So, I mean, I'm amazed at how composed he is at that. So I'm up here to talk, and I've written to you already about this, about the abuse of power from our Commissioners. And last Wednesday, I got a call that there was an illegal campaign or the campaign rally going to be going on at our Township Building at 5:00 in the evening. This was at 4:20. So I got over here as quick as I can. I didn't have any time to talk. I stood out here and I watched what was nothing short of pretty shameful activity. Several of our Commissioners were there, and the first thing that they did is they directed the people who were setting up their equipment for the campaign rally to go to our Policeman and Fireman's Memorial and set the equipment up on there. Then they decided that they were going to use our township resources to support the rally. Now, I told one of the Commissioners, I said, you cannot use township resources. This is our building. We pay all the bills. Jay Blumenthal forces us to pay taxes that end up supporting a Democrat campaign rally. That's wrong. I get it that you get 14 to one right here, but y'all are supposed to represent everybody in the township, just not your own partisan political positions. Okay? So you set up your equipment on the Policeman and Fireman's Memorial, which is, it was just, it's a gas. I just couldn't believe it. All right? Then think about it. So Congresswoman Dean's there. She makes $175,000 bucks a year. Art Haywood makes $91 grand a year. And on Wednesday, I think you're supposed to be in Harrisburg. Ms. Gensst was there. She's a Representative 91 years. She's not even in Abington Township. This is why it was a campaign rally. Commissioner Schreiber, I think she makes 85 grand a year at the, at the, at the county. And then she also has a job right here. She ought to have enough to do at 5:00 in the evening to not be hanging around at a parking lot. Jay Blumenthal, I think, makes around 300 grand a year. I'm going to make a suggestion. You guys make enough money to rent your own hall, pay for your own resources, and have your campaign rally, not co-opting township property. And Manager Man Freddie, you should be the man that stands up and says, no, you can't do that right here. It's wrong. It shouldn't happen. Now, I happen to know that people have tried to do peaceful protests on the same area right here, and Manager Man Freddie has walked out and given them a threatening letter with a criminal citation if they so much as touch a piece of township property. So I don't know about the double standard, but pay for your own stuff. This is abuse of our township facilities. This is abuse of your office right here. Okay? This is abuse of our taxpayers. All of these people already have jobs, but what's even worse is two weeks from now, or one week now, two weeks from last Wednesday, is a primary election. So you have elected officials standing up here encouraging people to vote for them and vote. And then you also have Democrat candidates running against other people from not even in our township who are standing up here at the microphone, and everybody knows who they were. They're running, I think it was in 151st District. They're getting up and talking. So we have nothing but a Democrat campaign rally going on in our township with the absolute approval of our Commissioners and our Township Manager. It's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. I extended you. Any additional comments from members of the public here present? And if not, we will, we will turn to those participating by Zoom.
Mr. Seifried, you're unmuted. Mr. Seifried, you're unmuted.
Perhaps we can come back to him?
Ms. Lehman, you're unmuted.
This is Laura Lehman in Netherbrook. And again, regarding Mr. Rondelli's testimony, this is not a one-off here. This is a, has been a chronic, chronic problem due to negligence in the Code Enforcement Department not enforcing the code. When I first went, there were things like Midas Muffler, 10 years, the Tyson Avenue property, 10 years, they had been blighted, and everybody knew it. And they were dangerous, very, very dangerous, the Midas Muffler especially. And when I first went to speak to the owner of Midas Muffler, literally, she had just seen the Code Enforcement Officer who did not even ask her to do anything specific to her property. That's what she told me directly. And I worked with them both until the property was cleaned up and the sign was painted over, at least. That was just negligence in our code department. That person got elevated to zoning officer, which explains the Cedar Road and other problems that we have before us now. This is not okay. Mr. Man Freddie's been out to that neck of the woods and on, on an issue that he has not resolved. Years later, a year or two years later, he had to be called out again for the exact same thing. This, that's Mr. Man Freddie's himself, not doing the job that needs to be done. It's disgusting. We have so many things in this township that need to be fixed, and yet we are cut off at the microphone. We are not given the respect of getting answers. We do not even have somebody answering the phone. For us to have to call four, five, six times and try to work around who we're going to call next, a waste of our time. And we need to have the respect. It's our job to oversee who we elect and who they hire to look after our health, safety, and welfare. And what we have is a township full of people who are refusing to allow us the tools that we paid for. They use them for the developers. They use them for friends who want its projects and special favors. But when residents want to make their township better, those same tools are withheld. The comprehensive plan needs to have a GIS map. It needs to be taped and be online. Mr. Thompson, put those chapters up. If you haven't put them up now, put them up. You're trying to pass it and throw them up at the last minute because they are the most controversial chapters. Everything that you're doing is against the interest of the people that you're supposed to be serving. There's a boondoggle going on in the population figures for the comprehensive plan, and they know it. I'm going to be publishing that soon, but they know it.
Mr. Lehman, I'm going to ask you to wrap up. You're beyond your three minutes.
I will. Mr. Rothman's been asked about residential on the Huntington Valley Shopping Center, and he turns it around to them to say, oh, there's no applications in now. And he knows exactly what they need. And there are two conflicting zoning measures on that property. I would like an open conversation, Mr. Rothman, and Mr. Hecker, and Mr. Man Freddie, on all of these issues.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Lehman.
Thank you.
Mr. Seifried, you're unmuted. All right, Mr. Tobin, you're unmuted.
Yeah, Mike Tobin, Kirkwood Street. I would like to, we have quite a few meetings coming up with comprehensive plan and things like that. And I sent in an email and asked, you know, when will Chapter Eight and, and the survey be ready? And they're not ready yet. Do you have dates on when that will be ready? Because everybody should be given time to review that prior to the meeting. And the meeting, I do believe, is in 12 days. So do you have a date on when Chapter Eight and the survey would be ready?
Manager Man Freddie?
Mike, I am working on the calendar for the comprehensive plan with Commissioner Thompson as it integrates into all other things that we're doing, including adoption or presentation, I should say, of the comprehensive plan to the Board of Commissioners. Chapter Eight is in my office, and it is being reviewed and edited. It will be ready in the next month or so. I could give you a date sometime next week. I'd be happy to call you at that date.
Okay, but if, if it's not, if it's not ready, then would the next comprehensive plan meeting be delayed then until it is ready?
Manager Man Freddie, can I, can I take this one?
Sure.
Mr. Tobin, I, we don't have any more comprehensive plan development team meetings on the calendar. We will be adding some, but there are none at this time. I think the meeting that you're referring to is the Comprehensive Plan Consistency Committee meeting, which is scheduled for May 24th, 12 days from now. And that will be to discuss a separate land development matter, not the comprehensive plan that evening.
Okay, so that doesn't, that doesn't pertain to the plan in general?
Correct.
Okay, so the 24th is just going to be about Basel. Okay, so the 24th is just going to be about basals or whatever, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, all right, very good.
Yeah, we, we are committed to making sure that everybody has an appropriate amount of time to review and research all of this, and we will have, we'll have time for public engagement, so.
Okay, one last quick question, where can I find police stats for Abington, past and present?
That would be the Police Department. I think if a request is made of Chief Malloy or any of his deputies, they would provide that information.
There's not a website, you know, like, I can get on City of Philadelphia and I can look at, like, their stats. Abington doesn't have anything like that?
I don't want to answer the question because I don't know what stats you're referring to, there's a lot of information that the Police Department does have online, but to make sure that I don't mislead you, I prefer that you contact the Police Department so they can understand exactly what stats you're looking for and tell you if they are in fact online or if they would have to get them for you.
Okay, is there a specific person that I should talk to at the Police Department?
My suggestion would be you, you contact Ms. Gargan.
Gargan, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And Manager Manfredi, just, we, on the website, we do have stats related to arrests, car stops, calls for service, but we will, we will provide more details to you when you contact us.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Let's try one last time before we adjourn with Mr. Seifried. Oh, do you have one more thing to say? I'm sorry, Manager Manfredi, please go ahead.
Well, before, if, Mr., we'll, we'll see if he's available. Is he not responding? Should I speak now, Mr. President?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay. I just want to address once and for all, I'm not going to address Ms. Lehman's comments about 365 Cedar, what the accuracy or correctness of those comments, I frankly don't have the time to do that, but I would like to make one thing perfectly clear. This is not the first time there have been statements in my mind that are inappropriate about the current director of that community development department. She was not appointed, she was hired, and she was hired by me, and I support her to this day, I think she is doing an excellent job, and I'm not going to tolerate as much as I can, and I really have no way to control what other people may say, but I think it's wrong to disparage someone, and I think she is doing an excellent job, and I have zero problem with admitting to the fact that it was my hire, and I thank her for the work that she's doing, and I have nothing more to say on that topic. But there's one other thing. Ms. Lehman has asked for an interactive chart for the finances, for the budget. As you may recall, several years ago, I introduced the concept, and this board approved an Open Gov concept where the budgeting will be done online, every line item will be interactive on the website, we have talked about it publicly, we have, we've talked about it in this room for more than two years. The Finance Department has done an incredible job in getting it ready to a point where it will be interactive. It's something that we've been working on, it will be launched very soon, so asking for something that has been discussed in this room publicly and has, has been in the works for some time. So that is coming, that is something that this board sought transparency on, and we delivered on, and it will be delivered very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Manfredi. Commissioner Depone, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I want to make, make a statement. Last week, I learned of a Rowe versus Wade rally on our township property. My issue is that permission was given for the organizers of this event to use the taxpayers' electricity, my electricity, to power up their equipment. This event was attended by numerous elected officials who know better. Who authorized this rally on the taxpayers' property? Remember, this is not, the taxpayers own this building, I own it, everybody here owns this building. Why was this permitted on public property parking lot? Was there a permit taken out? Was there an email sent out to all commissioners that this rally was taking place on township property? The answer is no. Okay? This is not the Abington way, okay? This is not the township I moved into 36 years ago, okay? And, and it blows my mind, why is this township always in the center of controversy anymore? I don't get it. We just need to communicate more, okay? Like, Mr. Hecker, you made a comment about the, you contacted several commissioners regarding the Willigrove Park project, and we weren't having a hearing. Well, was my name on the list to be contacted? Because this is the first I'm hearing about it. Or was I ignored and my residents ignored again? Okay, I may be only one voice on this board, but I got to tell you something, you don't want to get on my wrong side, okay? I'm sticking up and fighting for the residents of my township like I have done the past 23 years, and I get phone calls about everything, okay? And then I have to have the answers, okay? People are calling me, asking me to, I don't, I said, I don't even know what you're talking, what rally, what are you talking about? Okay? So we have to communicate better here. Again, I know I'm only one voice here, but damn it, I'm going to fight, okay? I'm going to fight, and fight hard, okay? So there's questions here that need to be answered, okay? Was everybody called? I wasn't. It's like I'm ignored, and that's going to stop, I'll tell you that right now, okay? It's going to stop. So there's questions that need to be answered here, I want to know, why was my electricity, okay, authorized to be used for, I don't, listen, I don't care what rally or event, what party, this, I couldn't care less about that. It was an event held on my property and my electricity used, I didn't authorize that, I didn't say it's okay. How can we do that? I don't get it. How the hell can we do that? It's got to stop, and it's going to stop now, okay? Because I'm going to fight damn hard, fight, okay? So I needed to get that out, and that's just my feelings about what happened, because I'm getting phone calls, I don't know what the hell is going on, okay? The Willigrove Park thing, okay, we're not having a hearing. Oh, really? When did that come about? Were you going to call me? Was I going to be called? As a ranking member on this board, was I going to be called and say, hey Dennis, the hearing's off, we're not going, or were certain individuals called? That's wrong, okay? That's wrong. That's all I have to say about that.
Before we adjourn, I think it's important to correct the record that the rally that has been questioned by several individuals this evening was organized by a community group called Abington for Peace, and it was advertised on their Facebook page. It was not organized by this board, it was organized by a community group called Abington for Peace, and if you're on Facebook, you can go to their Facebook page and see it. I'm not entertaining questions at this time, Mr. Rooney.
Mr. Rooney, Mr. Rooney?
Mr. Rooney, you have had your opportunity to speak.
You're not saying things are correct.
I, I'm telling you that they organized, I understand you were there.
You were there.
I, I understand I wasn't there.
He directed everybody where to go and what to do. He was running the operation at the Township Building.
It was organized by Abington for Peace. Thank you, and with that, we will adjourn.